Good evening. This is Chairwoman Jane Lickter. I now call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag to be led by Ms. Chika Kalu. We will then have a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County. Thank you. Tonight's Board of Education meeting is being broadcast through the BCPS online live meeting broadcast and on BCPS TV, Xfinity Channel seventy-three and Verizon Fios Channel thirty-four. In order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items this evening will be done by roll call vote. The first item on the agenda is the consideration of the January fourteenth agenda. Dr. Rogers, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
I am unaware of any changes to this evening's agenda.
Hearing none, the agenda stands as presented. Earlier this evening, the board met in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act for the following reasons: to one, discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals; consult with counsel to obtain legal advice; and consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The closed session summary and the open session information summary can be found on Board Docs under this board meeting agenda date. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Matters, and for that I call on Mr. McCall. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Lickter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, and members of the board. I like the board's consent for the following personnel matters: retirements, resignations, leaves, ethics review panel appointments, deceased recognition of service, and certificate appointments.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel matters as presented in Exhibit E-one through D-six?
So move, Chika Kalu.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Stolesky.
Thank you. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Stolesky?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Lickter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Administrative Appointments, and for that I call on Dr. Rogers.
Thank you. Madam Chair Lickter, Vice Chair Harvey, and members of the board, I'm bringing forward the following administrative appointments for your approval: Assistant Principal, Catonsville High School; Assistant Principal, Patapsco High School.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel matters as presented in Exhibit E-one?
So move, Pumphrey.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Young.
Thank you. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Stolesky?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Lickter?
Yes. Motion passes. Dr. Rogers?
Thank you. Our first appointment is Christine Komorowski. Please stand to be recognized. Christine is attending with her mother, Toni, and is being appointed as the Assistant Principal at Patapsco High School. I also saw her principal here, Dr. Rodriguez, with fourteen years of experience with Baltimore County Public Schools. Her experiences include French teacher and resource teacher at Kenwood High School. Congratulations. Her next appointment is Tracy Raymert. Please stand. Tracy is attending with her husband, Joseph, and is being appointed as the Assistant Principal at Catonsville High School. With twenty-three years of experience with Baltimore County Public Schools, her prior experiences include middle school classroom teacher, mathematics, and resource teacher at Southwest Academy, and business education teacher, COP teacher, career research teacher, and career navigator teacher at Catonsville High School. Congratulations.
So congratulations to our two newest assistant principals. Our next item is public comment. This is one of the opportunities the board provides to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. If not selected to address the board, members of the public may submit their comments to the board members via email at boe@bcps.org. The Baltimore County Police Department's Homeland Security Unit and Office of School Safety has recommended safety and security protocols which are posted in the boardroom and available in board docs and on the board's participation by the public website. While we encourage public input on policy programs and practices within the purview of this board and this school system, this is not the proper forum to address specific student or employee matters, or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. Inappropriate personal remarks or other behaviors such as language that promotes violence against a BCPS employee, or that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting, are out of order and will not be tolerated. Persons who otherwise disrupt or disturb this meeting will not be allowed to continue their remarks and will be escorted from the meeting. Please observe the three-minute clock, which will let you know when your time is up. The microphone will be turned off at the end of your time, or prior to that at the discretion of the board chair. I will now call on our school system affiliated groups to speak, and our first speaker is Darrell Perry from Scotts Branch Elementary School. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for your warm welcome and for affording me the opportunity to share a few remarks this evening. Again, my name is Darrell Perry. I am here as a school-based representative of Principal Lauren Tillman and the Scotts Branch Elementary School community. I would just like to highlight a few positive remarks observed over the past couple of school years of Scotts Branch, from my lens in particular as the community school facilitator. I would like to acknowledge two of the pillars that are rooted into the community school strategy, one being family and community engagement, and the other being collaborative leadership and practice that I think is exuded by this meeting forum here today. And embedded within those two pillars, I believe, are the two concepts being identity and culture, not necessarily in a sense of physical makeup, or, you know, extensive backgrounds, or whatever may have you, but in the idea of collaboration in what we're doing today. And I see this reflected at Scotts Branch Elementary School through the vast community partnerships that we have, that are reflected through various stakeholder groups, two include faith-based organizations, sorority and fraternity organizations, local agencies, the Baltimore County Public Libraries, so on and so forth. These efforts support in addressing our many community needs that ultimately foster student success and wellness at home. We're able to see these efforts manifest not only in accordance with school progress planning, but also measurable data analytics and metrics, which have positively resulted in our recent start rating inquiries and our progress that have been shown in ELA and math through MCAP testing. While we're always appreciative of acknowledging these recognitions, we identify our growth areas, and we remain motivated and positively steadfast in achieving these goals. And again, I believe forums like this really help support us with your collaboration, and we continue to push forward under the leadership of Principal Tillman, our school administration, the Board of Education, and of course Superintendent Rogers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andre Broadwater from PTA Council of Baltimore County.
Hi.
Hi.
Happy New Year. My name's Andrea Broadwater. I am Secretary of the PTA Council of Baltimore County. As always, we thank you for the opportunity to share with you our news and concerns. First, we want you to know we're working hard, as always, supporting all of the PTAs and PTSAs in Baltimore County Public Schools. Our PTAs and PTSAs are busy, incredibly active groups of parents, teachers, students, family, community members, supporting the work of our students and teachers. As you know, we work together every day to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Our next general meeting is on January thirtieth at seven PM, and that'll be on Zoom. We want to make sure you know that you all are welcome. The meeting will feature a legislative update to orient us to education-related business and legislation expected in Annapolis, and then a more in-depth discussion of some legislation on which PTA Council has advocated for several years, including a bill supporting healthy school start times. As you know, PTA is first and foremost an advocacy organization. As such, we work closely on advocacy with Free State PTA, and I just want to share their principles for legislative action. Parent, student, sorry, parent, family, student, and community involvement in education is crucial. All children have a right to an excellent equitable education. Students must provide a safe environment where all students, teachers, and staff can thrive. I think I said, did I say schools must provide the safe environment? I hope so. Advocate for adequate funding for services, resources, and programs. So on that note, I do want to make sure everyone is aware that Free State PTA will host its annual Legislative Advocacy Day in Annapolis on Monday, February seventeenth. That includes a full day of meetings with legislators and is followed by an evening reception. If you haven't had a chance to do that before, I highly recommend it. We are proud to represent our units and our members in a variety of ways, especially around health-related topics like the healthy school start times legislation. We're discussing the dangers of synthetic turf, and then the work we've done partnering with BCPS on the responsible cellphone use. The early results of that pilot are encouraging, and the folks leading that effort are truly impressive. And finally, we want to thank Dr. Rogers and Ms. Charlie Green for continuing to take time out of their busy schedules to meet monthly with PTA presidents and PTA council. We really appreciate the school system updates and the ability to ask questions of BCPS leadership in an open format, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker or speakers are Jordan Salkow and Forside Ogongbe. I practiced, and I knew I would mess it up by practicing. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Ms. Lickter, Vice Chair Ms. Harvey, Dr. Rogers, Student Member Ms. Chika Kalu, and other members of the board. I am Jordan Salkow, the BCSC president.
And I am Forside Ogongbe, the BCSC Vice President.
Today, we are back to update you on the current status of the Baltimore County Student Council, or BCSC.
BCSC has made substantial progress in enhancing student engagement and leadership county-wide. On December sixteen, we hosted our first General Assembly of the year, with twenty-plus schools and over two hundred students in attendance. As part of our leadership development, our student workshop coordinators and operations director organized a series of workshops designed to foster collaboration and unity among student leaders. Since our last report, the Baltimore County Student Council has had two executive board meetings consisting of our forty executive board members, who have been working efficiently in their respective roles and producing amazing results.
We have successfully held four virtual seminars open to all secondary BCPS students this year. These seminars allow students to receive information from central office guest speakers and participate in valuable conversations. November's topic was mental health with our guest speaker, Behavioral Health Services Supervisor Ms. Brown. In December, we talked about school safety with Mr. Knox, the BCPS Executive Director of School Safety, and this past month, we had our Student Resources and Wellness Seminar with the Director of Student Support Services, Mrs. Mustifer, where academic and wellness resources were discussed. Overall, these seminars have been an amazing opportunity for students to share their thoughts and concerns directly with central office members, while also getting to hear informative presentations from them on their expertise.
Our two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six SMOP applications have officially opened. Applications open December second and will close on January twenty-fourth. BCSC has been working diligently to promote the position to all students across the county. Our SMOP Outreach Committee Chairs are also hosting a SMOP Application Information Night on January sixteenth at five-thirty. We will be reviewing the duties and expectations of the position, the application process, as well as having a Q and A with our current SMOP Ms. Chika Kalu.
As you have heard, we are increasing our outreach and impact on students tremendously, and with this, the need for resources increases as well. However, like other centrally funded programs, we have faced hardships this year, specifically with our funding for meetings and transportation. We have made the decision to host our next General Assembly meeting virtually due to these budget changes. We will be working closely with our SMOP and our whole officer team to figure out how to best continue supporting and advocating for students in every way we can, despite these financial hurdles.
We are also continuing to remain heavily involved with the Maryland Association of Student Councils. Several of our executive board members serve in leadership roles, as well as present MASE conferences and events. On January twenty-fifth, we'll be attending the Rinter Leadership Conference to vote for our state's SMOP, and in March, we'll be traveling to Ocean City for our student leadership conference.
Thank you all. We'll see you again next time.
Thank you. Our next category is Unions, and we have a speaker from TABCO, Ms. Kelly Olds. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Lickter, Vice Chair Harvey, Dr. Rogers, and members of the board. I'm Kelly Olds. I am the TABCO Vice President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you to all who were able to make it to the TABCO Legislative Breakfast on Saturday. You braved the cold and snow, and we had valuable conversations around not only legislation, but also the working and learning conditions that are hindering our students and our educators and their success. The Family Feud-style game was eye-opening for many and lots of fun. Let's please continue those conversations. There is much work to be done. Dr. Rogers, at your budget presentation yesterday, you again made the commitment to fund the negotiated agreements with our educators. Thank you. We all know the hard work that is happening every single day by our educators for our students. As you have shared, we are seeing the results move in a positive direction. Retaining our educators is important to continue positive movement. Knowing our compensation is one step in helping retain our educators. TABCO will work with our county council to do all that we can on that side to be sure that they fund the budget as well. As always, TABCO stands at the ready to do the work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker from nonprofit community groups is Marietta English from Baltimore County NAACP. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Lickter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Rogers, and members of the board. I am Marietta English, and I chair AXO and the Education Committee for the Baltimore County branch of the NAACP. I would like to thank Superintendent Rogers for that great presentation yesterday about the budget. We have a clear understanding of how the budget was formulated and the priorities of the district. We're also so proud of BCPS and the achievement of the students and the teachers of the district. It's a great achievement to have twenty schools receive five stars and only one to receive one star, and I will address that later. But I am proud of BCPS and the leadership of Dr. Rogers and the school board. But I have with me, have with me here this book entitled "The Night When the Music Room Came Alive." Why do I have this book, and why am I sharing it with you? It was written by one of my first students of the AXO program. He was a student, it's Otto Gross, and Otto was a student at Harvard Center for Arts and Technology. He competed in the instrumental music category, and he also competed in the music composition category. He won our first gold medal in the instrumental category at national competition. Otto went on to Berkeley and was a sum cum laude graduate. He has had a tremendous career in music instrumental, in music. He certainly, he now lives in Nashville, and he is conductor of the symphony there. I certainly think this book should be in every library in Baltimore County Public Schools, simply because he was a student and he wrote the book. And this is why AXO is so important. This is just one of our stories, and there are many others. But this is why I'm so happy that Dr. Rogers and this board continues to support this wonderful program, and I thank you.
Thank you.
And it's on Amazon, in case, in case you want to purchase it.
Of course it is. Our next category are individual citizens or students, and our first speaker is Mr. Ralph Joffe. Good evening.
Good evening. Let me know when my three minutes start.
They start, as soon as you start talking, we will start the timer.
Okay, here we go. First, I want to wish all of you a Happy New Year, and I thank you for coming. I have a program that is designed to do the following. If you are familiar with a student in Wisconsin, fifteen-year-old girl that shot three people, wounded several others. If you're familiar with a student in Georgia prior to that, who shot two students and two teachers, wounded others. If you're familiar with a student in Jabba Town, who shot one student in the bathroom. This program, which has been getting lots of calls to you good folks on the board, especially to Dr. Rogers and the board itself, saying they want this program implemented, because this program is designed to take people like those three students who got to a point in life where they were so depressed and so dejected, felt so isolated without any love, that's why they resorted to what they did. This Tutor-Mentor-Team program is designed to keep them in school, and it works like this. By the way, if this program were to be implemented, my salary would be, hopefully someone will say, "Thank you. I'm not taking any money, because that's how I'm doing this." What motivates me to get up in the morning is because I love helping people, and I've been doing this all my adult life. So the way it works is like this: we take a group of at least three successful adults, could be four, five, six, seven, but minimum of three, so one person doesn't do all the mentoring. And then we connect the student to the team. And that student can be anywhere from grades one through twelve, girl, boy, black, person, George Catholic, whatever. Once the connection's made between the team and the student, the team stays with that student till either the student graduates from high school with a diploma, or if the student wants to go to college, the team will stay with the student till the student graduates from college with a degree and a job which the team helped him or her to acquire. This has never been done. There are mentoring programs like this, but this has never been done. And I am convinced that had those three students had this Tutor-Mentor-Team connection, this could have all been avoided. And I'm just, I'm just pleading with you. You've known about this since November of two thousand and twenty-three. I always like to ask the question, the following question: what happens four months from today if somebody gets shot up in a school in Catonsville, or Essex, or Pikeville, and four people were shot, and seven are wounded, and we didn't do anything about this? How are you going to feel when you've had this opportunity for almost more than a year now?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Sharon Serhoff. Okay. Our next speaker is Adam Van Bevel.
Hello, and thank you for the time and consideration this evening. My name's Adam Van Bevel. I'm the father of two Baltimore County Public School students. I'm also the founder of Maryland Indoor Air Quality Advocates, MIACA, a statewide coalition of parents, teachers, public health experts, and community stakeholders. Yesterday, I listened to the upcoming budget presentation. Priorities for our district include addressing absenteeism, test scores, health and safety, teacher recruitment, and retention. The current lack of indoor air quality best practices being implemented in BCPS schools creates significant issues with all of these priorities. One focus from yesterday's presentation revolves around special education and disabilities, which are a significant population within students as well as teachers. The most common type of disability pre-K through twelve involves specific learning disability, an example, dyslexia, thirty-two percent, speech or language impairment at nineteen percent, and chronic or acute health conditions, example, asthma, diabetes, at fifteen percent. And that data's all from a recent Pew Research study. So what's this have to do with indoor air quality? Everything. We choose the food we eat, the beverages we drink, but we can't choose the air we breathe in public spaces. Air is invisible. If you're not monitoring it, it's hard to fathom the issues. Respiratory viruses, particulate matter VOCs, mold, other inorganic materials like microplastics, they're in school buildings across the district. Using asthma as an example, say it costs a family eight thousand annually in medical care costs for their child, is it worth ten thousand to cure it? As a parent, the answer's easy, but bureaucracy says no. The reality is that a year of healthy life is worth seven hundred thousand dollars. The disability adjustment for asthma is point one-three, meaning curing asthma has a net benefit of eighty-nine thousand dollars per year. That benefit is a ten x return on cost, and that's just asthma. Indoor air quality is the most immediate and meaningful investment BCPS can make, but without being in the budget, it's invisible, just like the air we breathe. Without addressing this issue, the hidden problems will continue to become more apparent over time. IAQ creates immediate impact. Boston has a nationally recognized IAQ program. Connecticut Public Schools just launched a statewide program to have portable air filters in every classroom. Montgomery County locally, great example, a district who took ESAR funds and allocated them towards this issue. They have ten thousand units monitoring the rooms in their buildings district-wide. With this in mind, MIACA has presented three options that require zero budget to immediately address this issue: private donations, foundation and grant funding, and the addition of an annual IAQ fee per family district-wide. By implementing our recommendations, BCPS not only enhances the quality of life for students and teachers, but also stands to see a reduction in absenteeism as much as twenty-five to forty percent by recent studies, enhances teaching and comprehension, improves test scores three to four percent in one recent Texas study, and adds value to teacher recruitment and retention and retention. I'll close with this: why are IAQ indoor air quality best practices not being implemented by Baltimore County Public Schools? Thank you.
Thank you. We do have space for our waiting list. Ms. Tiana Patterson? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Fern, I didn't mean to. Our next speaker is Dr. Fern. Good evening.
Good evening to all. I reviewed the video of the last meeting, and it took me a tremendous amount of time. Time is money. I really ask you what I asked you before, to make the written minutes much more detailed and informative. Many speakers in the last meeting talked about helping all students. I agree. I'd like you to consider learning from China and India. China is producing humongous number of engineers and scientists, and now is a superpower. India's producing quite a bit of back-office employees. I enjoyed really listening to Ms. Tiara Dwyer's question, very important question. Ms. Tiara, you ask, "What would you ask our elected officials so we may succeed?" And of course, Dr. Rogers answered, "People asking for more money." And that's the big ask that you have portrayed to the media. I'm really concerned that over the past twenty-five years, it's the same discussion. I remember when the budget was eight hundred something, one billion, now it's two and a half, or something like that. Pouring money on the problem is not a solution. I ask you to look for effectiveness and efficiency before before you cause raising taxes of us, the citizens in the county and the state. The presentation about math three, four, and five was really interesting to me. I think the numbers were too much for the public. I think they should be a little bit easier, and the results were not statistically significant. I'm hopeful that next time presentation would be much more informative. I really liked the presentation about cell phone policy. However, I would say that the chief of staff observation is subjective, and we know what the problem with cell phones. Companies have already studied them. We know that they affect all students in all counties, all states, and I ask you basically to consider that. Policy three hundred, obviously you did not take my critique and concerns, and I'm really concerned about that. And it shows in the rule sixty-three oh one, rule sixty-three oh one about the calendar discriminates against the Muslim students. It gives a favorite position to our cousins, our half-brothers and sisters, and I think that's clear discrimination. It violates totally policy three hundred.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tiana Patterson. Good evening.
Hi. How are you all doing?
Good.
I had no idea. I only had three minutes, so I know I have a lot to say. I'm gonna try to conduce it. So, I am a grandmother now. I was a mother of students in Baltimore County. Over the years, some concerns have grew. Right now, presently, one of my concerns is for my grandson, who was in the fourth grade abused by one of the teachers, and I mention that because it has escalated and grew, you know, with scars and concerns as he grows throughout his school years. We are presently in middle school now. The main challenges are how the girls are able to put their hands on the boys, and it's not addressed at all properly. We've had incidents where it's overlooked by the principal in a manner that when the boys are running from the girls and hiding behind the teachers to not let it happen, the principal has mentioned that sexual assault. I'm really trying to fish for the main topics, because I have so many. This has affected not just my grandson, but several boys. I have offered to start programs for girls and boys because it is a factor that is not being addressed by adults, as well as some of them, the monitors, I guess they're hall monitors, as far as them adulting instead of being friends or homies with the kids and being able to make statements to them that can be productive, for them to be productive in their learning. I have not seen that happen where he's presently at, not from the principal. Thank God, it is assistant principal there that has been very effective, but she's, has interned somewhere else for the month. But it's still ongoing. I've had, where my grandson has been threatened on Instagram, and they were told that it, I was told that it happened a week ago. It has been other situation where he's been slapped or hit, and it's just not really addressed. And then, when the boys do make an issue about it, they're looked at according to their size or how they react, or if they have issues in other areas, it's not really been addressed. This didn't just start. This has been going on for a very long time. Two thousand and five, I can remember from my own son. But right now, it is truly escalated to the point, in Franklin Middle, that it is overbearing. I'm quite sure that adults will point the problems to the children, but we were here before them, and I really would like for something to happen in so many areas in that school, and I'm more than willing to be a part of it like I already am presently. So, I'm asking for your help.
So, if you would like to send us the full comments that you wanted to make, then we can have staff follow up with you to address your concerns with this specific school.
I thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, and for that, I call on Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, and good evening. Chair Lickter, Vice Chair Harvey, members of the board. I have a very brief superintendent's report this evening. I think the slides will come up shortly. In a little while, further down in the agenda, I will be sharing the proposed fiscal year 2026 operating budget. I did want to take a few moments to review with all parties our operating budget timeline. As you know, we begin this work in September. September through December is when we develop the plan, submit it, and review it. But this is based on a collaborative process that really engages all members of Team BCPS. As you know, we sent out stakeholder surveys. We have a principal budget priority survey that they complete. We had five community conversations, monthly principal meetings, monthly central office leadership meetings, and different advisory and stakeholder group meetings, so that what we present to the Board of Education really represents an informed view and input from all members of our community aligned to our student needs and the student data. And during this month, in January, I recommend the budget. The Board of Education reviews the budget recommendation. We have public hearings and work sessions to answer questions. February twenty-fifth is the date for the board to approve the budget request and submit it to the county executive and county council. From March to May, the county executive has a team. Our school system presents to the county executive, answer any and all questions. The two budget teams work together closely. Then, based on that decision, the budget moves to the county council for the same process to occur where the budget is reviewed. There are questions between the two budget teams. In May, the county council approves the final budget for Baltimore County, which includes Baltimore County Public Schools, and on July first, funds are available for the next fiscal year. So, we just wanted to remind everyone the timeline for the entire operating budget process. Lastly, we wanted to remind everyone, last year, for the first time, we developed Budget 101. It is a robust webpage where it provides all kinds of information that you would want to know about our budget development process, our actual expenditures, I believe we go back to FY18, how we've changed in staffing, what drives the budget, our sources of revenue, how we spend, and we also have vignettes from many members of our schools and schools' communities providing direct feedback and insight on the operating budget. Tomorrow, we will have several videos uploaded from school principals, from teachers, and central office leaders speaking to their direct experience in Team BCPS and the impact of the strategic investments in the budget. And so, want to point everyone to take a look at Budget 101. Information is updated there, and it's available for the entire community. So, with that, I say thank you for the opportunity to share those reminders.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is chair report, and I first like to thank Tapco and ESPNBC for hosting the annual Legislative Breakfast last Saturday. This annual event allows BCPS Board of Ed members, as well as many elected officials, to listen to staff as they discuss their day-to-day work in BCPS. The discussions focus on both what is working and areas in need of improvement. Thank you to staff, elected officials, and my fellow Board of Ed members who gave their time Saturday morning to attend and participate. I'd also like to acknowledge the passing of Ed Gillis, former Board of Ed member and chair. While I did not serve alongside Mr. Gillis, I was an employee of the system during his tenure on the board. I was always impressed and grateful for his leadership skills, patience, and integrity. I learned a lot from watching him and hope as a board, we can honor his memory through our work together. I'd also like to thank Dr. Rogers for yesterday's thorough presentation on the FY26 budget. The presentation was very clear and outlined core components of her proposed budget. In a few minutes, Dr. Rogers will make her formal presentation to this board. However, based on yesterday's presentation, my learning and takeaways include that the budget is very aligned with the system's four priority areas. Last year, Dr. Rogers utilized strategic budget practices, including zero-based budgeting, budgeting to actuals, and maximizing grant funding. This allowed her to look for any and all ways to cut expenses. Significant cuts were made, saving the system one hundred and five point one million. A zero-based budget process was also used to construct the FY26 budget. However, the work done last year makes this year's trimming even harder. However, twenty-six point three million was trimmed. The amount for gas and electric will cost an additional nine point eight million dollars in FY26. The whole thing scares me a little to look at my home bills, but that is a huge amount of increase. And the last part is that we are making significant strides. While I acknowledge that much work and improvement is still needed, the trajectory is in the right direction. First, we needed to stop the decline, and then we needed to move in the right direction. Both have occurred. The budget that was presented reinforces what is working and keeps two non-negotiables in place. Funding our union's compensation packages and keeping current class averages in place. I look forward to hearing Dr. Rogers' report tonight and engaging in meaningful dialogue with my colleagues and staff as the budget process moves forward. Committing resources to benefit our diverse student population is a critical function of a Board of Ed, and I know my colleagues take this work very seriously. We want to thank our funding partners in advance for their support of the budget and their continued support of Team BCPS. We invite members of the public to stay engaged with this process. We will hold a public hearing on the proposed budget on January twenty-first, and members of the public can sign up to provide testimony. Thank you. And next on the agenda is our student member of the board's report.
Good evening, Board Chair Lickter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Rogers, families, community members, and of course, students of Baltimore County. Also, Happy New Year. I hope you all had a joyful and restful holiday season. But as we step into 2025, I also wanted to take a moment to hold space for the students who may not have experienced the holidays with joys or peace. While many celebrated, others face loneliness, instabilities, or circumstances far from festive. And for those students, school is truly more than a place of learning. It is their refuge and their community, and sometimes their only source of consistency and support. So, while we are rightfully focused on academics and achievement, I also wanted to take a moment to recognize the way of what some students may carry outside of these walls. And while I could fill you in, the million things happening with what work I'm doing, I wanted to spotlight the invaluable conversations I've had with students. They've shared their frustrations, hopes, and their realities, and I'm here to amplify their voices because their stories deserve action. And they don't always speak in terms of policy or metrics. They speak in their lived experiences. So, first and foremost, I want to give a recap on our student resources and wellness in our mental health seminars hosted by the Baltimore County Student Councils. One glaring example of the lack of student resources of prevalent was during this seminar. Qualitative feedback suggested critical concerns about mental health and wellness resources. And the issues weren't necessarily about availability. They were about accessibility, timeliness of support, and the comfort students felt when reaching out for help. From this feedback, students have been seeking out normalized conversations surrounding mental health and increased accessibility rather than simply providing resources. Key points included that students voiced that they didn't know how to access services, or they found them difficult to access. Another issue that students pointed out was stigma and barriers to seeking help. Some students expressed a deep-seated fear of judgment when reaching out for support, and despite the progress Baltimore County has made in this stigmatizing mental health, it is clear more work to be, more work needs to be done to ensure that it's seen as a strength and not necessarily a weakness. And one surprising trend that emerged was students' desire for more peer-to-peer support programs. They said they felt more comfortable discussing issues with others who have walked similar paths, suggesting that expanding peer mentorship or peer-led wellness initiatives could help bridge the gap in the support systems when they see those like them advocating for issues reflected and mirrored in their life. For our mental health resource seminar, some concerns were difficulty with scheduling meetings with counselors, which leaves students without immediate support when they need it, teachers denying permission to leave class to visit counselors, which can prevent access during moments of crisis, and then also posters and informational materials not being visible in schools, and students just simply unaware. And then, some growing areas of concern and opportunities are some, are common mental health challenges that we have seen nationwide, so stress, anxiety, and overexertion due to high expectations and transitions between school levels from elementary to middle to high school, bullying and stigma, fear of confidentiality breaches, and then students not knowing if they can do anonymous reporting for peers or reach, or reaching out to other students to report themselves or just a friend. Additionally, students also perceive that sometimes teachers are too busy or unapproachable for mental health concerns and just unawareness of available resources that Baltimore County has offered, like Talkspace. And for some goals, students also identified some strategies. Like I mentioned in my previous board reports, nature-based activities like the Baltimore County Student Council's Environmental Committee's Nature Walk, evident advisory classes creating safe spaces for mental health discussions, school clubs incorporating mental health strategies, monthly counselor visits to counselor, to classrooms for fun and engaging activities for mental health discussions. And then, they also said school-based mental health workshops for students who can't stay after school, and also just awareness or introducing anonymous reporting mechanisms for students who share concerns without fear of judgment or retaliation if the system doesn't already offer that. And, but I also recognize the challenge because people don't always seek out the resources we offer until they need it in that moment. And then, students also highlighted ongoing issues related to feeling unsafe at school, there's a fights, bullying, vaping in bathrooms, and arising safety threats. They said bathrooms, stairwells, and certain hallways were frequently mentioned as areas where they feel the most vulnerable. Some suggestions included increasing adult presence throughout schools, especially in hallways and bathrooms, but also clear communication of their rights and how to anonymously report concerns. They also suggested holding school safety-based seminars within their schoolhouse to educate students on safety protocols and available resources. And then, they also suggested improving communication about school safety protocols beyond our standardized drills. And another thing that students raised was a lack of clarity about within the Board of Education and with district-level leadership. They said there was a lack of clarity about what the student board member and the Board of Education does and how their decisions impact them on a day-to-day life. Many students don't understand the role of the Board of Education, the student board member, or our impact, and there's a need to increase student awareness and participation. While student engagement is growing, and I also want to commend Baltimore County Student Council for the work they've been doing this year, feedback suggests that it's often one-sided, a one-sided with many students not feeling empowered to influence decisions directly. And so, I plan to address this with monthly board recaps, increased social media engagement, and also just engaging with students and with the Board of Selective Students. And many have told me that I am one person in the many undertakings I have done, and so, I commend you all for taking those volunteer positions, but I still implore my board members to personally seek out student voices and include them, not just as a point of feedback, but throughout the process. Because in my many meetings, I have always noted that students don't also want, don't just want to merely feel as though they're there to be a feedback point, but to also gain and to see the product of their feedback. And then, one area that has also constantly come up is just students being able to feel solidified in their cultural identity and then just the ability to speak openly in classrooms. And while some of these may view their stories as anecdotal, these are still lived experiences, and unfortunately, they are far from unique. And then, for a brief, brief summary of recent engagements and initiatives, this past week, I had the privilege of attending the National Urban League Conference in New York City. The discussions focused on reimagining accountability in education, so a shift from performance-based assessments to more holistic approaches that consider the whole student. My top three takeaways were shifting from simply requiring passing and assessment to growth, recognizing barriers, and then student voices and assessment, so students having a say in how they're evaluated and having the ability to take ownership and co-engineering, co-engineer the education. Additionally, one of my biggest takeaways was just ensuring that our intervention students, flag students, not simply when they've fallen below a certain threshold, or they haven't passed certain areas, but proactively identifying students who have fallen. So, really looking at not just how low a student has fallen, but how far a student has fallen. And then, I've also engaged with different coalitions, including the students engaged at the C in Texas, the Kentucky Student Voice Team, as well as the Student Action Network for Equity, and the Kentucky Student Voice Team has just filed a lawsuit in Franklin County arguing that the state has failed its constitutional obligation to provide an adequate and equitable education. And I'm also thrilled to share that I will be presenting at the And I'm also thrilled to share that I will be presenting at the National School Boards Association, hosting a breakout session alongside the National Student Board Member Association as their National Policy Director, where we'll be co-leading discussions on student leadership, equity-driven policymaking, and students engaging at the Board of Education with the title "Advancing Student Leadership and Representation Through Student Voice on School Boards." I hope to see some of you there as we continue to push for more inclusive, student-centered governance. I'm also excited to share that within my Board of Education report, I want a section that says "Leading Lights of Baltimore County" to spotlight students, two students each meeting where they're making a difference within their school and their communities. Too often, student efforts go unnoticed, and this will just ensure that students feel seen and celebrated for their contributions in small but meaningful ways. So all secondary school principals will be receiving a nomination form for students, but also, this isn't constricted to nominations for others. It's also, if you as a student recognize your interchange maker, don't be afraid to spotlight it. And lastly, student board member applications are open, and they close January twenty-fourth, this Thursday, January sixteenth at five thirty PM. We'll be holding the SMOB info session with the code SMOBINFO on Google Meet, and this is your chance to make an impact and represent your peer. On social media, there is a series ongoing called "In the Chair," behind the scenes of the Board of Education, and from fun TikToks to advice from your future board colleagues to input from the same students you serve, be sure to look out for more and from the same students you serve. Also, be sure to look out for more social media campaigns throughout the year, from Opportunity Friday to more quick fires to ask me anything beyond the diploma and student advocacy toolkit. Again, I'm excited for the work that we have done as the Board of Education, and as we move into twenty twenty-five, I'm excited to continue to elevate student feedback and truly listen to the stories and experiences of students. I commend Baltimore County and everyone who has played a role in helping students improve and showing tremendous growth in the school system, and I'm excited for the work to come. We often hear of the three-year timeframe, but B C P S has seen improvements. I'm excited to see how their stories and experiences of students are reflected into that work. Thank you for your support, and I look forward to what we accomplish in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business report on board policies. This is the second reader for these policies, and for that, I call on Ms. Christina Pumphrey, Chair of the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you. Members of the Board, the Policy Review Committee asks that the Board accept the committee's recommendation to amend the following board policies: Board Policy Zero Three Hundred, Equal Employment Opportunity, and Board Policy Eighty Three Thirty Minutes. These policies are presented to you on tonight's agenda as Exhibits J One and J Two.
Thank you, Ms. Pumphrey. Board members, are there any separations requested? May I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the Board's Policy Review Committee for Board Policies Zero Three Hundred and Eighty Three Thirty?
So moved, Harvey.
Thank you. No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy? Dr. Savoy? Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Lickter? Thank you.
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Savoy.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business, the proposed FY twenty-twenty-six county capital budget, and for that, I call on Dr. Grimm.
Good evening, Board Chair Lickter, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, members of the Board. We're here this evening seeking approval of the FY twenty-six county capital budget request.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's proposed FY twenty-twenty-six county capital budget?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Staluski.
Thank you. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski? Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Lickter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session, and for that, I call on Ms. Devasti Jones.
Good evening, Board members. On January eighth, twenty twenty-five, the Board heard oral arguments and took action in H E twenty-four dash thirty-seven. Now would be an appropriate time to confirm the action taken on January eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the action taken in closed session on Hearing Examiner's Case H E twenty-four dash thirty-seven, and authorize Ms. Goover to sign for those board members not physically present.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Lickter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is contract awards, and for that, I call on Mr. Young, Chair of the Building and Contracts Committee.
Members of the Board, the Board's Building and Contracts Committee met on Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Items M one through M nine were forwarded to the full Board for approval.
Thank you. We also have had a request for separation of M six and M seven. So first, do I have a motion to approve items M one through M five?
So moved, Staluski.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Chika Kalu.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Lickter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve items M eight and M nine?
So moved.
Well, then I was going to come back since those are the ones that were asked. That's okay. Somebody said, "May I have a motion?" I missed the... Okay, thank you. May I have a second? I don't need a second because it came from the committee. Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Lickter?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve items M six and M seven?
So moved, Young.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Dominowski?
I think I just answered my own question, but so I was looking at the contracts for to expand the...
Relocatables?
Yeah, well, the first to expand how much money we could spend.
Spending authority.
Spending, thank you. Spending authority, and then for the lease. And I was going to ask, are we extending it because we are seeing a need for another one? But I think you're extending it because you need to pay the money on the lease. Is that correct? Are they connected? So on the, okay, so the one contract is to expand the spending authority for five months, and then the other one is to extend the lease for five months. So are these, you're extending, are you extending the spending authority to pay the lease?
So the, so the two, the two separate contracts, one is for the lease of relocatables, the other is for the purchase of relocatables.
Okay.
So this time, each year, actually throughout the year, the team assesses our relocatable needs for the upcoming year. We actually begin now the planning process to move or augment the supply that we have. Chris Roberts, our Director of Facility Support Services, can expound on that. But I believe to answer your question, it's not to continue to pay the lease, it's to continue so that we can lease them through this contract and enter leases for the coming year.
So do you see, are you seeing a need for more relocatables? Is that why we're extending it? Or just to continue with what we already have?
So we are, we are constantly ending leases, purchasing new ones, getting rid of old ones. It really depends on the project that we're entering into and what our needs are. And I think Chris can answer that more specifically.
Sure, and we work closely with our Office of Strategic Planning. So relocatables are used to provide capacity relief in overcrowded schools. Last year, we were able to use some to assist with the pre-kindergarten expansion. So they're used for a myriad of reasons. And to answer your question, we're really not expanding. I think through a lot of the hard work through the capital improvement program, we're building additional seats so that we're reducing the need for relocatables. However, there still is a great need where we need these contracts to continue the leases and purchases as needed.
So I guess my only question is, why only do it for five months if we know that we're going to possibly need them more longer?
And this has just given us time to rebid both of them. So this extension gets us to where we need to be to work with our partners in purchasing to rebid these.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any further, Ms. Hen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see that the funding source for the purchase contract is listed as fifty-eight percent capital funds. Are we using state capital funds? I believe there's a separate state construction funding source that's provided for school systems that have relocatables in use. Is that the funding source that's being used to fund the purchase of relocatables, do we know?
So predominantly, what we're doing is through the operating budget. I know that the capital budget is used from time to time for what I'm going to call our larger modulars. The Dundalk High School is a good example of that. So although a relocatable, it's a larger unit that is paid for utilizing capital funds while that project is going on. Does that help? Your day-to-day single classroom units are all operating budget.
And we've talked about that before. In association with the capital project, then some of those funds are set aside for the use of relocatables in association with that project. What I've learned recently is that the state also provides funds for those school systems that have use or have need for relocatables. And there's a separate fund aside from the regular capital improvement program. I don't know the name offhand, but specifically for, and I believe we receive in the ballpark of six to nine million per year based on our use of relocatables. So is, can someone speak to?
I don't think, I don't know that we're prepared to speak this evening, whether that's, whether those monies are coming from that specific fund or not. We can certainly find that out and get back to you.
Okay. My question has to do with the rationale of the continued use of relocatables versus investing that money in our capital improvement program because, of course, our preference is to move our students in permanent facilities. But if we continue to use that state funding, and of course, we're grateful for the state in funding that. So I'm trying to connect the dots and understand if the state is continuing to fund our use of relocatables, is that the smartest investment versus investing that in our capital improvement and expanding our facilities versus continuing to purchase relocatables?
And absolutely, it's our preference to do the same thing that you're speaking of. It's not our preference to use relocatables. As we noted in the exhibits, we saw the dramatic price increase of aluminum ramps, for example. Chris and I were talking about that recently on our relocatable units. So the costs continue to grow. We also know, as we were looking at pre-K expansion, for example, the time that it would take us to go through an entire process to add on a classroom or multiple classrooms to a building, we would, we would, we would be four or five years out depending on what we were trying to do. So sometimes relocatables give us more flexibility to move forward with something rather quickly. It's also important to note that we have relocatables around the system that have become almost permanent fixtures at some of our schools because of the programs that they serve, and others are there on a much more temporary basis. As Chris noted, we're constantly assessing our inventory and trying to reduce the numbers that we have.
So there is, and no pun intended, an off-ramp to move the, sorry, couldn't help it, to move away from the relocatables because we're, when I see an increase in spending authority and growth in relocatables, of course, we have that need as the capital projects grow. But at the same time, you want to see a decline or movement towards the permanent facility growth as well. So that's good to know there is a plan or long-term plan to...
We have that same focus.
To move away from those.
We'd love to move out of the relocatable business.
Thank, thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
May I have a roll call vote to approve items six, M six and M seven? So moved, Dominowski.
Ms., we already, we did that. It's okay, we did the discussion after that, and there's no second needed because it comes from the committee. Sorry.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Staluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Lickter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the report on the proposed FY twenty-twenty-six operating budget request, and for that, I call on Dr. Rogers.
Thank you. Good evening again, Chair Lickter, Vice Chair Harvey, and members of the Board. I am pleased to formally present to you the fiscal year twenty twenty-six proposed operating budget recommendation. During this evening's presentation, we will share some demographic information to make sure everyone is aware of some of the changes in Baltimore County public schools. We will discuss the progress of Baltimore County public school students over the last school year, and then we will detail the recommended proposal. As you know, Baltimore County Public Schools is the third-largest school system in the state of Maryland with over one hundred and ten thousand students. We have one hundred and seventy-six school centers and programs and more than twenty thousand employees. Our students are comprised of a very diverse group of learners. On this slide, it depicts our student ethnicity groups. Also, one hundred and twenty-two countries are represented by our student body, and one hundred and three languages are spoken. Want to take a moment to reiterate some of what I shared during the superintendent's report today, and that is really the process that we follow as a school system to develop an operating budget. As a very large school system, it's very important to us that the tagline "engage, empower, and excel" really models how we operate. It is not an exercise in alliteration, and so it's important for us to truly engage with our community in a variety of ways. On this slide, there is a list of the different ways that we have engaged with members of Team B C P S. Also want to bring to the Board's attention, we shared the survey results that several thousand stakeholders responded to, as well as the survey results of our principals when we were talking about developing FY twenty-six budget priorities. And the number-one overall priority from all groups was hiring and retaining high-quality staff. We also will recall that all groups, again, agreed on that in developing this budget that the priority should be examining opportunities to improve and providing academic support services to students that are in need. And so as we go through the details of this recommendation, you will see where we are making sure that our recommendations are directly aligned with the feedback from our stakeholders. Everyone is familiar with this trajectory of college and career and community readiness. We will note that on this trajectory, it lists the specific steps that students should take throughout their careers in Team B C P S to be deemed college and career-ready. It starts as early as kindergarten. The ability for a student to be able to demonstrate readiness on the kindergarten readiness assessment, we know, has an impact to their future success in elementary school, middle school, and high school, which is directly aligned with our significant investment this current fiscal year and pre-kindergarten, full-day pre-kindergarten programs. this current fiscal year and pre-kindergarten, full-day pre-kindergarten programs for our students. Before the state started to discuss their expectations regarding grade three reading at or above grade level, Baltimore County Public Schools identified this as a specific marker for our students. Very grateful for the support of the Board of Education, ensuring that we had the resources necessary to procure a brand-new literacy curriculum for our elementary school students that we, first year was last year. We are able to see growth from our students as a result of that, and also looking to make sure that our students are able to demonstrate achievement at or above proficiency level in grade five, successful completion of algebra in grade eight with a grade of C or higher, and several different markers in high school. From the very beginning, we have shared our strategic plan, which guides our priority work. In this strategic plan, we've identified four main priorities for Team BCPS. The priorities for last year were the same, are the same priorities for this year. We know, understand, and take very seriously that our core purpose is to make sure that all students are learning at high levels. Academic achievement is our number-one priority, but as we have stated before, there are three other areas that we must tend to in order to make academic achievement and improvement a reality for our students. Those areas are infrastructure, making sure that we have efficient and effective processes, safety and climate, really addressing the safety of our students and our staff members, both the technical safety, leveraging technical tools to address the safety of our students, but also the climate where staff members and students feel empowered to share their lived experiences so we can continue to make improvements. And lastly, or firstly, highly effective teachers, leaders, and staff. We know that none of this work can occur without people, and we are very grateful for the work that our 20,000 employees continue to do, day in and day out, on behalf of our students. This slide shares our academic priorities for Team BCPS. Again, nothing has changed from last school year because this work is not yet completed. Our four areas are English Language Arts, understanding and acknowledging that literacy is most important. It is really the foundational skill that, that is necessary for all students to be successful across all subjects, mathematics as well, and acknowledging that our fastest-growing population in Team BCPS are multilingual learners. So a special focus on meeting the needs of our multilingual learners, as well as meeting the needs of our students receiving special education services. We have identified the investment in people as critically important to doing this work. We have worked very hard to develop a professional learning culture. That work is led by Dr. Liz Berquist, who is our Executive Director for Employee Development. Our focus is on providing strategies and skills to all staff members across Team BCPS, focusing on effectiveness to impact student achievement directly and retention. We know that the research tells us that the impact of teachers, a team of teachers focused on student data, is critically important, as well as the impact of effective principles. 25% of student improvement can be attributed directly to effective principles, and we also know that the work of a team of teachers, which is why we've doubled down on our efforts of professional learning communities, is that they have the ability to look at student progress and for those students sitting right there in the classroom to examine the areas where students didn't do well, to plan for changes, and to go back into that classroom the following week to reteach and reassess our students. So we, before we move into our data and the story over the last year and a half of Team BCPS, we want to take a moment to share the impact video that really speaks from the In the interest of time, we can play it at the end unless you're ready to go. Ten seconds.
Hey there, Team BCPS. Outgoing County Executive, incoming Congressman Johnny O here. And to continue the positive momentum and fast-forward student success across BCPS, we must continue supporting our amazing principals, educators, and support staff. We must continue making needed investments in both our people and our infrastructure, and we must continue engaging with parents and community members in the years ahead.
We have seen significant improvements across the school system. The Maryland School Report Card shows that. Whenever this happens, we are first tasked with confirming why things have improved. We should ask ourselves, what is this success the culmination of? These aspects of our plan should not change, and yet to continue to improve, we must set our sights on any areas, groups that may have been underserved, leading to this point. Throughout this process, all stakeholders must be on the same page as we are to help our, all of our students achieve success.
When I hear those words, engage, empower, and excel, for me, that means intentionality and reaching the students, helping them reach their goals academically, socially, and emotionally. As a parent, I can embody that, those words by offering authentic conversations with my student about what their goals and aspirations are, as well as talk to teachers, and viewing assessments to understand the implications of those results, and just continuing to support students in the vision of Baltimore County Public School.
I love being a part of Team BCPS. I love the way I'm treated, not only with the district, but with my school. I like what we foster with our students. I like our math curriculum that we offer to our students. I love that I graduated from Woodlawn High School and that I'm able to come back and foster those relationships and teach the children of a school that I used to be a part of.
We are choosing innovation over what we have always done in order to excel all students, and we are empowering one another to take risks and to learn together, to grow together, because I believe that that is the vision of Dr. Rogers. Through our work with Research for Better Teaching, we are learning more and more about how we can truly captivate, motivate, and ensure that all children are engaged in high-quality instruction in every single classroom.
BCPS, and more specifically Eastern Tech, does a great job of fostering trust among students, parents, educators, and the school itself. I think trust is one of the most important things that we can maintain, and by establishing transparency between everybody, by posting updates in school G-groups, I think we do a great job of promoting student success.
I've been in the county since kindergarten, and I really enjoy just having an impact on my community through SGA and through other clubs that I run, and I love my teachers. I haven't really had any bad experiences with my teachers, and I feel that a lot of BCPS students are just really supported by our community and our admin, and I've just had overall really good experiences with them. BCPS is helping me succeed definitely through the teachers. I have close relationships with a lot of my teachers, and I feel like when I'm going through a really hard time with school or just in my personal life, I can always rely on a bunch of trusted adults in my school, my teachers, my admin, guidance counselors, because they really promote that we are here for you in my school. There's resources, QR codes to make appointments. So if you need anything, you know that the admin is always there.
We must ensure that students have access to the resources and mentorship that will set them on the path that they desire in life, whether that be college, small businesses, or many other tasks that you can take in life.
When I'm engaged, I can empower others around me to then also be engaged, which makes the people around me and the whole school environment excel.
Our team has wholeheartedly embraced Dr. Rogers' vision of engage, empower, and excel. We first engage all of our schools by building relationships. We build relationships with our principals, with teachers, with staff, and with students in order to foster this school improvement work. We empower our schools to be creative, to think outside the box when they're thinking about school improvement and how to meet the needs of all of our students. And finally, we excel because we know using the five domains of rapid school improvement, our schools are positioned to excel.
Anecdotally, this investment in adult learning has already yielded an increase in productivity, an increase in job satisfaction. Folks are talking to us about morale, just the ability to be together in a space dedicated to adults is already impacting that. And I'm also excited to say that we do have data that shows a direct link between individuals that participate in professional development and training and retention. And the other exciting thing that we're happy to report is that our stakeholders are giving us great data on enhancements in our customer service and communication practices as a result of our trainings that focus on our standards of excellence. Organizations that invest in their adults are organizations that are able to thrive in difficult times.
Never before has special education been at the center of all conversations, whether that's from data discussions to service delivery in schools, to our services and commitment to families. Special education is a priority. So by it being a priority, it's allowed us to leverage resources that we haven't been able to have previously. That's with allowing us to have IP facilitators in buildings, to increase special educators with a priority for early childhood, and access to home schools for our youngest learners. We've been able to really prioritize that funding to support our students receiving special education services and their needs and services.
We must determine what is working for our communities, why it's working, and then how to build on that success. Openness to change is a part of a positive, hopeful environment. We create this by embracing discomfort and vulnerability and celebrating this with the staff and administration.
Well, I think everyone applauded BCPSTV and the communications. We thank Ms. Oni Jala for her lead in that area. I did share what's most heartwarming of the video to me, while all parts were great, was really hearing our students speak to their lived experiences in our schools. The young lady who talked about being here her entire life, while that was cute, what I enjoyed the most was hearing about her experiences with teachers, with staff members, her feeling comfortable, she has someone to go to, and really, that's the experience that we desire for all 110,000-plus students who go to our schools. Another staff member talked about the expectation that we are all learning together, we are growing together, and that truly is our expectation for members of Team BCPS. We had a tall, we have a tall order in front of us. To, to reverse the trajectory of academic decline that has been growing for more than a decade is very hard work. I have shared with the community on many instances that Implementation Science in Education shares with us that to have systemic and sustained improvement for a school system, not just a segment of that school system, that it takes three years. We need to make sure that we are clear in our expectations, that we're setting a foundation, we're implementing with fidelity, and then we give teachers and students an opportunity to do their best work. For the next portion of this presentation, I am so pleased to share that the story that we have seen so far in Baltimore County Public Schools is a very different story. And so the first data point that we will review is chronic absenteeism. We all know and understand that in order for a student to learn, they must be present in school. As a direct result of the hard work of central offices working together with school teams focused on ensuring that students were in school, this last school year, Baltimore County Public School had the highest percentage of improvement in the entire state of Maryland. And while that is definitely exciting, what we are most proud of is the story that lives underneath here. This is not just improvement in the aggregate. It is improvement for all zones, it is improvement for all grade levels, it is improvement for all racial groups, and it is improvement for all student service groups, which include our special education students, our multilingual learners, as well as our students living in poverty. Our most improved schools, it's a good idea for us to give them a shout-out, who have really helped us to ensure that students are in school and learning at high levels, McCormick Elementary School, led by Principal Cortezus, Lansdowne Middle School, led by Principal Warfel, Milford Mill High School, Principal Shipman, and the three schools with the lowest rates of chronic absenteeism, Jacksonville Elementary School with Principal Miller, Hereford Middle School, Principal Moore-German, and Eastern Tech with Principal Anderson. So congratulations to all of them for that hard work, as well as the work of all the schools across Team BCPS. So when we're looking for student improvement, we're looking at multiple measures and indicators of success. One of the ways that we measure along the way in BCPS is using MAP data, measures of academic progress. We look in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring at how our students, particularly in grades three through eight, are performing, with reading progress and math progress. What you see on this slide for reading, we looked at both the percentage of students scoring the 50th percentile and above, as well as 61st percentile and above, adding that 50th percentile marker to align with the AMIRA benchmark. And what we note was that there were improvements in all areas. Students also exceeded their growth targets that were available in the winter for them. We also note where we have had a evidence-based curriculum, math, for a few years longer than our one year of elementary, one and a half years at this point, and we are piloting secondary, that we see a higher rate of growth for our students there. Our most improved elementary schools were McCormick Elementary School, led by Principal Again, actually, I think this slide is incorrect, so we will skip that. The data is correct. The school's highlights was not correct on that document. The next piece of data that we'll look at is reading progress. As I shared earlier, on our college career and community readiness trajectory, we've identified students reading at or above grade level in grade three as a key indicator for us. It is also aligned to recent expectations from the state of Maryland that came across to all school systems that will from the state of Maryland that came across to all school systems that will be requirements in the next, in the upcoming years for students at grade three. We're very proud when we look at our AMIRA data, because AMIRA data is based on our new curriculum into HMH, which is rooted in the science of reading. Particularly, this tool has been validity and reliability tested. There is no room for subjectivity, as teachers do not provide the assessment, nor do they grade the assessment for the students. For every single grade band, you'll note that our students showed significant improvement. But what's also important to note is our youngest learners, where this is their first curriculum that is aligned to state standards, it is rooted in the science of reading, they're showing growth at a much higher rate. And so we're expecting to see continued growth in our schools. We do know that two schools were neck and neck for the highest rates of growth this past year, and that was Gunpowder Elementary School, led by Principal Cunningham, and Perry Hall Elementary School, led by Principal Thompson. Our next data point is the state assessments. For a very long time, Baltimore County Public Schools has had teachers working very hard to ensure that students are able to demonstrate mastery as evidence on the state assessments. However, as we know, our state, our curriculum was not aligned with the state standards. And so having made some changes in elementary school literacy, piloting now secondary literacy, and having made some changes in mathematics, we were very proud to see the data come out for our students in 2024, where BCPS improved in 13 out of 16 indicators across grade levels from grade three to high school. And as a result, MSDE identified that we had the second highest percentage of improvement in the state of Maryland. And our last data point is the Maryland Report Card star ratings, which we've shared recently in December. We are, we continue to be excited with the results from all of our schools. As I shared before, we made an exception and went out more than two decimal points because we are outpacing the performance of the state. This star rating is important because it points to not only academic achievement, it includes academic progress and progress in achieving English language proficiency, which for our school system is the largest growing student group across the system. We're excited that we don't just have positive growth in the aggregate, but when you disaggregate this data by school band and school levels, you see growth in our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools. Looking at the star ratings as we reported previously, we have tremendous growth in the percentage of four-star schools, and we have 20 five-star schools in the state, which results in Baltimore County Public Schools having the greatest number of five-star schools in the state of Maryland with 20 schools. Thirty-eight of our 176 schools improved their star ratings in BCPS. With one school, which happens to be the school, the elementary school with the highest improvement in chronic absenteeism, McCormick Elementary School, they move their star rating two stars as a result of having students improved attendance and their improved achievement. But that's not all. We also have the highest rated high school in the entire state of Maryland, that's Eastern Technical High School. And we have two of the top-rated elementary schools in the state of Maryland, Rogers Forge Elementary Schools and Sparks Elementary School as well. And so shout out to all of those school communities for the hard work that they continue to do on a regular basis. And a special congratulations to the students for their continued dedication. These next slides are familiar with you. This next slide in particular is familiar with you, and it speaks to systemic and sustainable improvement. As we have shared before, there is a through line to what all school systems, particularly large school systems, need to invest in, in order to see improvement in students. The first is curriculum. And as I have shared before, very grateful for the support of the Board of Education with procuring high-quality curriculum that is aligned to standards, particularly curriculum in literacy, in mathematics, and our brand-new curriculum for multilingual learners. All of these curricula are evidence-based, and we have committed to fidelity of implementation, which is where central office and school teams come together on a regular basis to see what's happening in the classroom, providing that feedback and monitoring to make sure that our practices are in alignment with our expectations. The next piece is professional learning. Baltimore County Public Schools has reinvested heavily in professional learning. As I mentioned, we were very excited for our kickoff this past summer, where we had more than 30 days of professional learning provided to our staff. Even more excited that over 4,500 teachers and paraprofessionals chose to spend two full days in June engaging in professional learning, not only on content, but also the professional learning that we provided on high-quality teaching and learning, ensuring that we all had a common definition of what high-quality teaching and learning looked like, and what were the specific practices that we're expecting to see across classrooms for all students in our schools. Our professional learning focus is not only focused on teachers and paraprofessionals who work directly in the classroom, it also includes all of our leaders and our central office staff to ensure that we're on the same page. And lastly, professional learning communities. This is the vehicle by which we are regularly assessing our student data. We're not waiting for lagging data to talk about what we're going to do with the next group of students, but on a regular basis, in schools, in offices, we're looking at how our students are performing. In central office, we come together to identify those trends in areas where we can provide additional resources to schools, and we make the necessary changes on a regular basis. We have also shared before from the McKinsey Group study that they talked about school systems that continue to improve in a post-pandemic society. One of the things that they mention is implementation, the importance of implementation, that 70% of school system initiatives fail as a result of poor implementation. And so for us, we've been focused on implementation, ensuring that our implementation was closely aligned with our plan, that we had a plan of action on the big picture, but as well as what the details were and how we would monitor implementation. School system improvement is not just a technical process where we procure curricula and other items and have field trips and things of that nature. It is also a very social process. It's a process where we engage members of Team BCPS. We bring on new members to have innovative ideas. We empower them to engage in ongoing conversations and providing us with feedback. And as an organization, we are very clear about our areas of focus. We have processes in place that occur in a regular basis. We use data on a regular basis, and that use of data informs our next steps. It tells us whether or not we're moving in the right direction, or whether or not we need to make a course correction based on what's happening in our schools and offices. And it's also our responsibility as central office leaders to identify external distractors, to mitigate those barriers to the extent possible. So really, all of our 176 schools can focus on the 110,000-plus students that are in front of them. Leadership is critically important to this work. You know, yesterday, as I met with many principals in the audience, as well as central office leaders, I acknowledge that every single leader brings a certain technical level of expertise to their roles that positions them well to do the work. But it's more than that, particularly if we're looking to improve as a school system. It's also the adaptive leadership that is critically important. A person's ability to exercise good judgment and problem solve in the moment is part of the work and the skills that we need and as part of the Team BCPS workforce. We are asking for a major investment from our funding partners, and we know that we need to have a return on investment. And we understand that having 111,000-plus students who are literate, who are very high-functioning in society, who are contributing to society in a variety of positive ways, is incredibly important. We also know that if we implement with fidelity, that we're going to see earlier, more frequent wins in the improvement process. And I just shared specific data points indicating that's the direction that we're moving in. Improve climate and culture, higher rates of retention, which we reported to the board last year as we reviewed our human resources data, there were many teachers that were eligible for retirement that made the decision to stay. We are very excited by that because our veteran teachers possess that knowledge and ability to mentor brand-new teachers, and they also are able to provide us with critical feedback that we need to continue to improve. And as we know from this room, we have been seeing a new trend where we have interest from others across the state of Maryland to join Team BCPS, and we are truly encouraged by that. Again, we know that there is a lot of work for us to continue to do. And so this budget really makes a recommendation based on our student data, the continued work for us to do, and the needs of our students. The ASK is a no-frills budget. Last year, we were very fortunate to be able to engage in a variety of practices that allowed us to identify savings, over $100 million worth of savings, and we were able to make strategic investments after looking at the data, after engaging with members of Team BCPS, both internal staff as well as external stakeholders, hearing from students about what their needs were. We were able to put in place many foundational elements that we needed to move the school system forward. You've heard about some of those elements. I am grateful for your approval of the budget and the full funding of the county executive of the budget and the county council, which allowed us to place IEP facilitators in our school, staff development teachers in every school, math coaches, a pilot to help us improve those math numbers, and many more investments in our students. This budget really acknowledges the challenging fiscal landscape, but wants us to do what we need to do as a school system to remain true to our core purpose, which is teaching and learning. Those 111,000 students are counting on us to give them our very best to make sure that every opportunity that they have with us is a positive one, and that they're able to learn and demonstrate mastery of learning at high levels. So as we've indicated before, we knew that, or we learned, starting in the summer, that this was going to be another challenging fiscal landscape for this budget year. We were actually looking for a very positive year because this current FY25, the percentage of blueprint funds allocated to schools, that percentage is 1.7%. So looking forward to more than double that rate at 4.97%, we were excited at what that might mean for us in terms of investments. We have learned that there are challenges at the state level, and there are questions in terms of upcoming federal funding. With that being said, we know that we have requirements as a school system. Some of those requirements are depicted on this slide, continued expansion of full-day pre-kindergarten, really meeting the needs of our students receiving special education services, fully funding our year-two compensation package for all 20,000 staff members, increased gas and electric costs, which I'll get into in a moment, and some of the remnants of ESAR funding, addressing the ESAR carryover, which was helpful, that helped us to fund extended school day, and some staffing carryover this year. We need to address all of those in the FY26 budget. As a result, we committed to being, remaining fiscally responsible. As a school system, we employed fiscally sound practices to reduce costs from within, to acknowledge that our county government funds us above maintenance of effort every single year, and that is not something that we take for granted. We do not want to compromise quality. And so the process that I shared with you, the purpose of engaging for several months with stakeholders who are closest to the work, is to make sure that we make informed decisions and inform recommendations to the Board of Education. This year, again, we employed zero-based budgeting from all divisions, requiring that as the divisions made recommendations and shared requests with us, that they showed, that they budgeted to actual expenditures, and that if there was an increase, they were able to show the source of that increase and show the math in the request for any approval. We continued throughout this school year to have a central office hiring freeze with a small exemption process. But this year, as we went to look at reductions that were possible, we had to make some very difficult decisions. This process was very tedious. We looked line by line of every single category for every single division in our budget. We looked at the data for every decision that we made. We looked at actual numbers. We looked at trend data for at least three years. And of course, our work was informed by our school leaders, as well as our central office leaders and our student needs. It's also important to note that we have worked to leverage some new positions to help us to offset some of our expenditures. Those positions, as you know, board-approved, the Director of Grants and Special Projects, really want to acknowledge and provide deep appreciation to Ms. Logeman, who is our Director of Grants and Special Projects. The goal identified for her for the year was to identify, to bring in at least $2 million worth of savings. As of last month, she had already exceeded that $2 million number. We also are working with the Educational Foundation to supercharge their efforts, and really working across our partners and the philanthropic community to bring in as many resources to Team BCPS as possible to offset costs, current costs, as well as future costs. The only other thing I will highlight on this slide is this year, we are recommending $26.3 million worth of savings. And last year, it was more than $100 million, bringing us to $130.4 million worth of cost-saving reductions that we have brought to the table to fund our critical initiatives that, as we see, based on early indications of the data, are moving, all data points are trending in the right direction. So now we move into the ASK. The ASK is divided into our four priority areas, starting with academic achievement, making sure that we are focused on using student data and using that data to make decisions about what's most important for our students, instructionally sound resources and practices to ensure that our students continue to move at record rates. It's important to know, I know I've said it before many times, that while implementation science indicates that it takes three years, Baltimore County Public Schools is moving at a rate that is three times faster than what is expected. If we continue to invest in our schools, if we continue to invest in our people, we will be able to, we predict we will be able to reverse that trend of academic decline in record time. And so this budget really maintains And so this budget really maintains a focus on those investments that have been helping us to move in the right direction. When we look specifically in the area of academic achievement, it's focused on two primary areas, responding to the needs. Again, this budget speaks to what we must do, what the expectations are in blueprint. So you'll see C T E funding to make sure that our students have access to apprenticeships, where last year, we were able to use additional forces, additional sources to address our per pupil funding expenditures. This budget includes an line item for that. The home and hospital tutors contractual rate increased, and so the increase that you see here in the budget addresses the specific rate, the hourly rate for home and hospital tutors to meet the needs of our B C P S students who are unable to attend school in person, mostly due to significant health concerns. In the area of growth, we see new school startup funds requesting one-time funding, and we also see our charter schools represented. Full-day pre-kindergarten expansion is a requirement of the blueprint. What I'll draw your attention to is the current state of Baltimore County Public Schools, where just a few years ago, we had 11% of our pre-kindergarten students enrolled full day. We're very excited at the fact that we have over 2,000 students enrolled in our pre-kindergarten classes this year. As it is a requirement to increase full-day pre-K seats, we are proposing a modest increase in our full-day pre-kindergarten programs. We are able to add seven classes across four schools. The four schools are listed there, Owings Mill Elementary School, Padonia Elementary Schools, Lion Mill Elementary Schools, and Rossville Elementary School. You'll note that to move forward with this request, it requires an additional 12.8 FTEs and $830,000. Those positions include teachers and paraeducators. Our next request is a large one, but I think we all have heard from our families of students receiving services, receiving special education services of the continued needs. We know that our student needs post-pandemic are even greater than they were before, and it is not only the law, but it is truly our moral obligation to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all students. And so this $23.2 million item is comprised of the following requests. We have some regional programs in the northwest and the northeast where we need to add teachers for our students. We want to add paraeducators, I believe 26 paraeducators, to our special education department, and that is specifically based on the national shortage that exists in special education teachers, but also the feedback directly from our principals. Paraeducators are in the unique position where they are able to provide direct services and supports to students, and what adding paraeducators to our budget allows us to do is to ensure that we're not adding teacher positions that go on unfilled, and in that case, the students have their needs remain unmet. And it also allows us to create our own pipeline for teachers internally, to grow our own paraeducators, to move them through a cohort model to become special education teachers, and adding additional adult assistance. Our special education students, or students receiving special education services, pardon me, require additional student assistive technology, that's $350,000. We use a lot of grant funds to meet the need of extended school-year programming for our students. The unmet need is $110,000. And the two last items are related. Probably for the last decade, as part of either the end-of-year BAT or a supplemental, the Board of Education has approved for funds to be moved to cover special education services. Special education services tend to go far beyond the budget. What is easier for a school system to do, particularly a large school system to do when there is a lot of flex in the budget, is to absorb those costs in the middle of the year and at the end of the year, because we did make all of the cuts, more than $100 million worth of cuts last year. There is no room, there is no flex to absorb an additional $13 million worth of unbudgeted costs. And so using our actual expenditures for our students, addressing the law that changed the tuition rates for non-public placement, we are recommending 4.2, an additional $4.2 million for related services. Related services, as you know, include our speech-language pathologists, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and our non-public placements, the tuition costs for our students, really budgeting to the need as we see them now, but also acknowledging that those needs continue to change on a regular basis. But this request gets us much closer to the actual needs of our students, so that if there is a future request for the Board of Education, it's a much smaller number than what we've had to bring forward in the past. Next request is for our multilingual learners. Again, the blueprint requires that, based on enrollment, that we increase our expenditures for our multilingual learners. As a direct result of the passing of the full budget last year, we were fortunate and able to increase the number of multilingual learner teachers that we provided in our schools across the system, and so this additional $453,000 expenditure goes to increasing interpretation services for our students and families, as well as contractual services to provide assessments for our multilingual learners. The total amount requested for the investment for academic achievement is $32 million, and as you will note, 73% of that amount is to meet the need of our students receiving special education services. Next priority area is safety and climate. We are receiving very good data regarding improvement in safety and climate, and we continue to work hard to make sure that our expectations are clear, that we are consistent in our responses. We're working together with all of our external partners on a regular basis and shared accountability to make sure that we're protecting and preserving safe learning environments for our students. This request moves the OmniAlert weapons detection system to the operating budget. We were able to fund this using grant funds, which are ending. As you know, the OmniAlert's weapons detection system is active across all of our school campuses. It is on 365 days a year, 24 hours per day, and this weapons detection makes sure that we are connected directly to emergency response, as well as our safety department, to make sure that if there is any emergency, that we are able to respond in record time to ensure the safety of our staff and students. This budget also requests an additional three FTEs to increase the number of athletic trainers. Based on our number of high schools, this would only leave us with the remaining three positions to fund, to ensure that we had an athletic trainer who is available to provide proactive support and responses to our athletes, as well as emergency responses on a regular basis. Next area is infrastructure, really focusing on efficient, effective, and responsive systems to ensure that we have smooth operations across Team B C P S. Our ASK in this area is bucketed into two areas, maximizing efficiency as well as maximizing cybersecurity. On this slide in front of you, you'll note those requests that are around efficiency for one-time funding, the continued funding of the enterprise resource planning software, which in plain language really makes sure that our human resources, our budget department, our Department of Information Technology, the software is upgraded, and all systems have good data and are able to speak to each other. This software will impact every single staff member across Team B C P S and our smooth functioning. You'll also note the rising costs in contract buses. We are very pleased about the service that we are able to provide to our 80,000 students that ride buses every day. We want to continue to provide the high level of services to those students, and you also see some rising facilities costs that we need, having the third oldest set of buildings across the state of Maryland. I continue to be impressed with the work of our operations teams in maintaining those buildings. We are certainly grateful for our state and county funding partners that allow us to move forward with capital projects, so we can replace those buildings as quickly as possible. But in the meantime, we want to make sure that the facilities that we have remain in good order, and I have been sharing very often the rising costs of utilities. So while members of our operations team are able to identify savings in some of the utility costs, one of the areas that is very jarring for us is the upcoming gas and electric costs. County government, including school system, will be seeing a price rate increase, and that price rate increase is $9.8 million. You see $8.7 million reflected on this slide because it also incorporates some of the savings in other utility areas. The other area is our infrastructure. We do know that government agencies and school systems, including ours, have addressed cybersecurity concerns in the past. It is important for us to remain vigilant in this area, and so on this slide, these are the requirements to make sure that our secondary schools, that our students are safe, and our staff members are safe when they are on the internet. Our aging elementary network infrastructure is requiring additional upgrades. Our D O I T team has been phenomenal in applying patches this year when elementary schools have experienced some outages, but what we really need to do is to upgrade the infrastructure so that all schools, all staff members, as they're accessing curriculum, as well as our students, are able to access what they need and that they're safe doing so. And then the last item is network security software and support. Our last area, our last priority area, sometimes we say it's our first priority area, is to our people. We know that in order to do any of this work, we need high-quality people. It is probably the reason why you will hear every single school system across the nation invest in compensation for staff members. None of this work happens, whether we are talking about academic achievement or we're talking about safety and climate, none of that work happens without high-quality people, people who are committed to the work, and more importantly, people who are committed to the 111,000 students that we are entrusted with their care. Our staff has demonstrated to us in a very short period of time that they are committed to our students in every single external marker. They have shown that they are moving forward in a short period of time, moving forward three times the rate expected, in reversing that trend of academic decline in Baltimore County Public Schools. Our unions, we work with them very closely, and we don't take that relationship for granted. They have come and made sure that they have been on the same page with us about the needs of our students. In this budget, we are asking that we deliver for them. We're very proud of the fact that we have a three-year compensation agreement. We believe that that three-year compensation agreement is not only the right thing to do, but it also helps us with recruitment and retention. Being one of the highest-paid starting teacher salary school systems before it was required with the blueprint, has helped us to recruit teachers to Team B C P S, but as I mentioned, it also has helped us to retain teachers who were eligible for retirement, who decided that they wanted to stay. It also should be noted that while all school system employees are 100% dedicated to the students that we serve, they're also dedicated to their families, and it is right for us to make sure that they can have peace of mind, not worrying about their earnings, so that they can focus on the real work that we're asking them to do day in, day out. And so this budget asks us to honor that compensation agreement in total for all 20,000 members of Team B C P S. This is the largest part of the request. Employee compensation increases for all, total $61.4 million. The contractual and substitute salary adjustments that we were able to pay with ESER funding, and because we had some quarter-one ESER funding left over, we were able to do that this year with ESER funding and not have to use operating funds for. This had made, has made a significant improvement in impact on schools. Principals will tell you, adult assistant positions are filled. Substitute, our rates for substitute and contractual employees is competitive in the state of Maryland, and we want to continue to do that. That has a price tag of $5.8 million, and with compensation comes employee benefits. And so a variety of benefits, including healthcare, FICA, unemployment, leave, overtime, and things of that nature, that amount requested is $14.1 million, for a total amount of $81.4 million going directly to compensation for team members across Team B C P S. So as I bring this recommendation to a close, I do want to review the financial summary. And so this slide depicts the general fund revenues. Our general fund budget, which contains the majority of day-to-day spending for schools, how we operate and offices, most of the salaries are here. It is proposed at $2.1 billion for F Y 2026. Our request to the county is $100.3 million. This request represents county funding, funding 10.4% above last year, or 10.9% above maintenance of effort, excluding one-time expenditures. This slide depicts all of our funding sources of revenue for our operating budget, and we will note the grand total of our proposed operating budget moves to $2.98 billion. I think as a school system, it's also very important for us to explain the components of our ASK. We work very hard, last year, as I mentioned, to bring forward over $100 million in savings, and this year, $26 million in savings, so that we can fund some of these critical initiatives to continue to move student achievement forward. Even with all of that hard work, even with going through line by line of the budget, meeting with divisions, meeting with offices, we have some very large increases that we have to account for. On this slide, you see more than $100 million worth of increases that we believe are must-dos, starting with our union agreements, followed by the extended school day and $4 add-on carryover that was covered with ESER. We see meeting the needs of our students receiving special education services and really budgeting to actuals. Our employee benefits, and again, I can't say it enough, that almost $10 million increase in gas and electric costs. This is more than $100 million worth of increases to the budget, and it doesn't even account for maintaining our built-ins that we have in the budget to continue to operate as a school system. So we want people to walk away with two main ideas. We have really listened to our stakeholders, reviewed our data, looked at our student progress, to make informed decisions and informed recommendation for the fiscal year 2026 operating budget. This proposed budget in front of you- This proposed budget in front of you, prioritizing recruitment and retention, which is what all of our stakeholders has told us is most important to them, all stakeholders, including parents, teachers, staff members, even, and all staff members across Team BCPS, making sure that we have that three-year compensation package to not only recruit, recruit, excuse me, the best and the brightest of Team BCPS, but also to retain our hard-working staff members, and it preserves and protects our current staffing allocation formulas, really trying to ensure that we do not increase class sizes, because we know every opportunities that teachers have to provide individualized instruction to students is their opportunity to help move student achievement forward. And while we have, we have kept all of these intact, that's why it is so critically important to receive full funding of the budget, because if we don't have full funding of these, of this budget, these two very expensive priority areas are areas that we have not entertained conversations to make changes to, that we will have to open discussions in these areas, and that is not something that we want to do as a school system. We want to honor our agreements. We want to take care of the people who have been taking care of our students, and we want to continue to move Baltimore County public schools forward and ensure that we move to our rightful place in the state of Maryland. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity to present the fiscal year 2026 budget recommendation.
So, thank you, Dr. Rogers, for this very comprehensive report, and I also like to thank you and your staff for all the work that has obviously gone into this up to this point. So there's a tremendous amount of information for board members to digest and read and think about. So please submit any questions you may have in writing on this proposed FY 2026 operating budget to Dr. Rogers by Wednesday, January 22nd, so that they can prepare for discussion at our January 28th boardwork session. Again, please submit any questions in writing to Dr. Rogers by Wednesday, January 22nd, in preparation for our January 28th boardwork session. Again, thank you, Dr. Rogers, for that. She doesn't have many notes up here as she goes through all that information, so she's storing a lot of that just in her head. So again, thank you for the work that's been done. The next item on the agenda is information, and it is the revised Superintendent's Rule 6301 concerning the school calendar. The next item on the agenda is board member comments, if you have any or any agenda-setting items that you wish to bring up. So again, this part is optional, but I will go around. Ms. Pumphrey, do you have anything you'd want to?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Mr. McMillian?
No, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Savoy?
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Deleski?
Thank you. First of all, I love Ms. Chika Kalu's idea to recognize for board meetings. That's really a wonderful idea to personalize what sometimes feels like a really large school system. I want to thank the leader, I believe it was from the Maryland Indoor Air Advocates, for bringing up concerns about indoor air quality, and it would be wonderful to have some kind of follow-up about the steps BCPS is taking to try to improve, put investments into improving indoor air quality. And look forward to seeing everybody at the public hearing on January 21st at 6:30 in, related to the proposed operating budget. Thank you, and good night, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Chika Kalu?
Just a reminder for secondary school principals and for students to submit your applications for the student member of the board applica, application, and that I hope to see many students there on the informational webinar in two days, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Young? Ms. Demanowski?
I, just quickly, I, I brought this up before, and I know, I don't mean to say his name wrong, Mr. Gaffey, Gaffey comes here often to talk about his program, and I know we've, we've tried to reach out to him, but if we could publicly say something about that, that we love, you know, whether we do or not, his idea, just how it is or isn't possible, and how can we make it possible, and, and just work with people that want to work with our kids and our school system, it's, I know there's a lot more to it, we can't just say, hey, here's three kids and, you know, mentor them, but if we could explain that to him, and then possibly, how do we reach out to groups like that, and what process do they need to go through to actually start something like that in our schools? Thank you.
Thank you. Just, he has spoken to many, many staff members through, through that.
I, I understand, but he keeps coming back, so he's not getting the answer he wants.
Right. Okay, Ms. Hen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have the honor and privilege of serving on the board with Mr. Ed Gillis from 2016 through 2018, and would like to extend my sincere sympathies and condolences to his wife Barb and family. It was a joy serving with Ed. He was one of the kindest and most professional colleagues I've had the pleasure of working with throughout my career. We served on one of the most contentious and difficult, stressful boards during one of the most stressful times in BCPS history, through some of the most difficult circumstances, and I never saw Mr. Gillis lose his cool. He maintained his professional composure, treated everyone with the greatest of respect and kindness, and with a grace that I will long admire and appreciate and have tried to emulate through my professional career. And to his family, I, I attended his service on Saturday. I see Mr. Gillis in, in each of you, and I know that his spirit and kindness live on in each of you. So I hope that, and pray that you are comforted by his memories, and please know that he touched so many more individuals than you, you will ever know, including me. So God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frompong?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
I just have a few things. So as a future agenda item, I would love to have some of our utility providers come to a meeting to discuss how they can support the school system in cutting costs on gas and electric, and what discounts they can provide, fees they can waive, or at the very least, what apprenticeship opportunities they can offer to our students, so that our students can fully realize this return on investment for the cost increase, and, and our students can have a direct career path into these services that are costing our school systems potential educator positions. I hate that we're facing this choice of, are we keeping the lights on, or are we going to lose some staff members? So I think that is a good discussion to have. Also, this month is School Board Appreciation Month, so I just wanted to say I appreciate all of you this month. This is January, and I know the State Board put out a really great video expressing appreciation to all school board members, so if you, if you haven't had a chance to watch it, definitely check it out. And then I wanted to just highlight, I went in December to the Second Annual Battle of Liberty Road. This is an event that's put on by Windsor Mill Middle School, led by Principal Hobbs, Deer Park Middle School, led by Principal Hughes, and this was, it was conducted at Newtown High School, led by Principal Martin. And this event, it not only demonstrated the investments that Baltimore County Public Schools put into safety and security, because you saw all the different, it was very safe, I will say that. You saw all the different, the funding that we put in, everybody was, we were all wandered down, I felt very safe there, there was plenty of police presence, but you also saw the staff from all three schools there interacting with students well after school hours, right before this break. And while Windsor Mill Middle School, they ultimately won both basketball games and put on a great halftime cheerleading show, I mean, the cheerleaders actually went to sleep on the Deer Park cheerleaders during the, the battle. It was a very engaging show, but it was an overall win for the schools and the community on the west side of Baltimore County. So if you have not had a chance to, to experience the Battle of Liberty Road, definitely put it on your calendar for next December.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey?
I have no items, thank you.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda is announcements. The Board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Superintendent's Proposed FY 2026 Operating Budget next Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, at 6:30 PM. The link to register to speak can be found on the Participation by the Public page, and also in Board Docs under this agenda item tonight. The Board's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Thank you for joining us tonight. The meeting is now adjourned.